Hi all, so I've come on here today to share a session. Um, the Holy Spirit has led me to actually do um research into the three days of darkness. And so this is going to be more of like a Bible session. So if you've got your Bibles ready, um, sorry, I've always wanted to say that. And I've got a cup of tea. Can I have a cup of tea with you all today? Absolutely, and this is just gonna be more of a Bible reading session for everybody. And it's come about because I've been praying about three days of darkness, just wanting to know a bit more. And I've been praying for a dream, you know, um, just wanting a dream about three days of darkness to show us what it's gonna be like, or just to have some more information. And the Holy Spirit is kind of like, no, um, this isn't about sensationalism, which I know a lot of people um just go on the YouTube channel to, you know, go from word to word, dream to dream, and just, it's all about sensationalism, rather than actually getting into the Word, getting into the scriptures, and what does it all mean? And so here today to talk scriptures. So if you're like me and you love the scriptures, then this is the session for you. Um, and to take everything back to scripture, not just to know about three days of darkness and what it's all about and the sensational side of it. Um, but it's all grounded in scripture and everything can be confirmed about these three days of darkness in scripture. And so that's what this is all about today. So kind of like the who, the what, the why, what is it? Um, just to give us a better understanding, and especially now, and after the Word the other day from Yeshua Hamashiach, about stepping into our calling as the priesthood of light, then we need to be grounded in scriptures for everything. Um, we need to be stepping into our calling as a priesthood of light as well. And that's, that's what he's um calling us right now to do. And so, yeah, the three days of darkness. And so to sum up, um, it's judgment. It's gonna be supernatural and it's gonna be demonic. And as I've said just then, it's gonna be the whole world is gonna be affected. It's for everyone. Judgment is coming for everyone. And so we have First Thessalonians 1:5 though to encourage us. "We are children of light, that this day won't overtake us as a thief." And the reason why um it says that um the Lord Jesus Christ comes as a thief, it's for the people that are in darkness. He's not coming as a thief for us as children of light. But this isn't gonna be condemnation for, for the children of light. They are gonna be warned, and so everyone is gonna know who are the children of light. They're gonna know about these three days of darkness and when it happens, so it won't overtake us as a thief. And so I'll just read out Ephesians 6:10 to 12, and this is regarding the demonic. "Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and in the power of his might. Put on the whole armour of God, that you may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places." So here, they are the rulers of the darkness. So this three days of darkness is gonna be demonic, and that's what's coming for the world, and it's because it's judgment. Again, we're gonna talk all the way through this during this session, and bring up a load of scriptures, and so we understand a lot more about what this is. And so it also tells us to put on the armour of God. So what is the armour of God? Well, in Romans 13:12, Paul explains, um, and he actually calls it the armour of light. And so the armour of God is the armour of light, and it's because it's his glory. So when we're filled with the Holy Spirit, when we're filled with his spirit, we are filled with his glory. And we are gonna be these warriors of light that are gonna manifest during this time of three days of darkness. And there's the greatest darkness in the world, comes the greatest light, and is manifested, sons and daughters, and the priesthood of light. And this is that changing of the guard, which we've been recently talking about as well. And so this is a time where all souls and hearts will be laid bare because of this judgment. And it's gonna be obvious who are the children of light during this time. And they are the manifested sons and daughters. The children of disobedience, they're gonna be in darkness, because they are the children of disobedience. Now, we've got the backsliding Christians or the foolish virgins. Well, there is a point where their lamp goes out, because they don't have the oil. But they are gonna have dimmed lights. They are still gonna be protected, because they're gonna be calling on the name of Yeshua during this time. So they are still gonna be protected, but it is gonna overtake them like a thief. They're not gonna understand what's, what's happening. And this is actually gonna create the falling away as well. But the, the true, true worshippers of Yeshua in this time, um, but unfortunately are in error or are backsliding for whatever reason. You know, there's no condemnation, um, but for whatever reason, this is gonna overtake them, because they don't understand the times that they're in. But because they do call on the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, on the name of our Yeshua Hamashiach, they will be protected, they will have dimmed lights. But again, this is gonna create a lot of confusion, a lot of heartache, and a lot of people to actually fall away though from the Lord during this time. And so that, that is gonna be, um, that is gonna just be upsetting really for us all, because we want everybody to be saved. Um, and so this is a time of judgment. It's also the beginning of the great tribulation. And our time as 144,000 to be the first fruit, and then begin our three and a half year ministry. Again, I'm gonna talk about that in another video, so I won't talk about it just now. We're just here just to talk about three days of darkness. So I'll just read out then Exodus 10:22 to 23. "And Moses stretched forth his hand toward heaven, and there was a thick darkness in all the land of Egypt three days. They saw not one another; neither rose any from his place for three days, but all the children of Israel had light in their dwellings." So again, this is um the judgment that was set for the Egyptians. So because Pharaoh wasn't letting the Israelites go, he wasn't letting his people go at this point. So these three days of darkness came on Egypt, and as it says here, it is a thick darkness. So that's another attribute of this, um, this darkness that's coming. It's going to be thick, it's going to be gross, it's going to be felt. And they're not gonna see one another, they're not even gonna see a hand in front of their face. It's gonna be, it's gonna be terrifying for the people that are in darkness. But this is the judgment that is coming. Um, but the Israelites, who are the believers, they have lights in their dwellings. So we are gonna have lights in our dwellings. And, and I believe because of the Holy Spirit, we are the lights, because it's the glory of God that's shining through us, from us. And so I'll just um talk about judgment then, the three days of darkness being judgment. So Jeremiah 13:15 to 16. "Hear ye and give ear; be not proud, for the Lord has spoken. Give glory to the Lord your God before he cause darkness, and before your feet stumble upon the dark mountains; and while you look for light, he turn it into the shadow of death and make it a gross darkness." So this judgment comes for the proud. It says here, "Give ear and be not proud, and give glory to the Lord," which we do, we do as priests, we do as believers, we are giving glory to our Lord. And so our feet are not gonna stumble, but for the proud, their feet are gonna stumble in the darkness. And so, and it turns into the shadow of death for these people. And again, it says, "and make it a gross darkness." So there's another attribute again, um, shadow of death, gross darkness. And it's because it's coming for the proud, the judgment has come for the proud, the wicked and the disobedient. And so Isaiah 60:1 to 2 then. "Arise, shine, for the light is come, and the glory of the Lord is risen upon you; for behold the darkness and gross darkness covers the people and covers the earth; but the Lord shall arise upon thee, and his glory shall be seen upon thee." So here again, this is a reference to this darkness. And this is what's gonna be happening again in these three days of darkness. It's gonna be gross darkness, but the glory of our Lord is gonna be shining through us, from us. Out of this gross darkness is gonna come the greatest light. And as it says here, "and can cover the earth," and gross darkness is gonna cover the people. So during this time of judgment, it is a covering. Now, I'm gonna do another video about this covering, because there's a covering of darkness, and then there's a covering of the glory of the Lord. But there's a lot more to this, um, and so I am actually gonna be doing another video about this, even just on its own. Um, but our covering is the Lord, and it's because we're born again and we're filled with his Holy Spirit. And so our covering now is his righteousness. Um, this is the armour of light, you know, we're, we're covered with his glory. But the people of disobedience, they're gonna be covered with this gross darkness. They have nowhere to hide, they are gonna be utterly exposed and in shame, because they remain in their sin. And that's what this is going to expose during this three days of darkness. And so it's all about the glory, the glory of our Abba Father, our Father God, glory of our King Yeshua. And so Romans 13:12 then. "So the night is far spent, the day is at hand; let us therefore cast off the works of darkness, and let us put on the armour of light." Um, that's uh the scripture that I just mentioned before, just with regards to the armour of light Paul was talking about. It's the armour of God. So during this three days of darkness, this is what we have covering us. And so it's his glory, and out of darkness comes greatest light, which is what I've said. And so Job, Job 3:3 to 6, I will just read out. Um, Job 3:3-6, I think I just said that, sorry. Let me just go back. "So let the day perish wherein I was born, and the night in which it was said, there is a man-child conceived. Let that day be darkness; let not God regard it from above; neither let the light shine upon it. Let darkness and the shadow of death stain it; let a cloud dwell upon it; let the blackness of the day terrify it. As for the night, let darkness seize upon it; let it not be joined unto the days of the year; let it not come into the number of the months." Very interesting. And so this man-child that's conceived, that is in Revelation 12. And the man-child that's gonna be conceived is the 144,000, the manifested sons and daughters. And so that's what it's talking about in Job. And then we also have here where it says, "Let it not be joined unto the days of the year; let it not come into the number of the months." So this darkness is gonna be outside of time. Uh, that's why this judgment is going to be possible. And so this is prophetic words from Job, not only about the man-child, um, but also to let us know that these three days of darkness are gonna be outside of time. So another attribute, now we've got another attribute of what it is. Um, and so with regards to the manifested sons and daughters, that's Romans 8:19. "For the earnest expectation of the creature waits for the manifestation of the sons of God." And as I've said already, you know, Revelation 12 is the man-child, and that is 144,000, and the priesthood of light. Um, and so just staying on with judgment for now, we've got Psalms 97:2. "Clouds and darkness are round about him; righteousness and judgment are the habitation of his throne." So the clouds are righteousness, and he's coming on the clouds, isn't he? So that is righteousness. And the darkness, here it says, um, is judgment. So the clouds and darkness are round about him. Righteousness, the clouds, and judgment, the darkness are the habitation of his throne. So again, you know, the day of the Lord is not of light, it's of dark, and that's um because it's judgment. And so we have Deuteronomy then 5:12, oh, sorry, 5:22. "These words the Lord spake unto all of your assembly in the mount of the midst of the fire, of the cloud and of the thick darkness, with a great voice, and he added no more; and he wrote them into two tables of stone, and delivered them unto me." So here again, with the judgment. So the fire, where we have the mount of, out of the midst of the fire, that is purging, that is always purging. You know, and we're going through the refiner's fire right now, and we're being purged. As we've said, cloud is righteousness, thick darkness is judgment again. And then the tables of stone, stone is also judgment, but it can also mean our heart. So this judgment is being brought to our heart. Um, and so this is why, when we become believers, we have a circumcised heart. It goes from being a stone to being a, a heart of flesh. And so the stone is judgment, and it's, it was set and it was established. And then Christ is our rock, he is judgment and the law he established. So this is what Deuteronomy 5:22 again is just telling us, that um thick darkness is judgment. And then Jeremiah 23:12. "Wherefore their way shall be unto them as slippery ways in the darkness; they shall be driven on and fall therein, for I will bring evil upon them, even the year of their visitation, says the Lord." Again, judgment on the wicked, it's judgment for all of us. But here it's stipulating that the judgment on the wickedness is the darkness is evil that is brought upon the wicked, and it's going to overtake them as a thief. So why has judgment come now? And it's because the time of grace has come to an end. So to bring in the, the new millennium and the new age, we have now reached the end of grace, the end of this time. And so we have the final judgment. And so these three days of darkness is just that, everyone, the whole world, heavens and earth are being judged. And so 1 Samuel 2:9. "He will keep the feet of his saints, and the wicked shall be silent in darkness; for by strength shall no man prevail. So not by might, or power, or strength of man, but by his spirit and his glory will shine." But he will also, he will keep his saints, his priesthood. He's going to keep us in all of his ways. But it's for the wicked, and they are gonna be brought to silence during these three days of darkness. And to Samuel 22 to 29. "For thou art my lamp, O Lord, and the Lord will lighten my darkness." So again, we have the glory of the Lord, and he is our lamp. We have ourselves filled with the Holy Spirit, he is our light, he's our glory. And he is the lamp unto our feet, absolutely. And so he will lighten my darkness, he's the light in our darkness. Excuse me, gonna have my cup of tea. It's just very British, isn't it? And so the judgment then is to reveal our hearts. So I will just read out 1 Corinthians 4:5. "Therefore judge nothing..." Excuse me, sorry. So, sorry, 1 Corinthians 4:5, struggling with these pages. "Therefore judge nothing before the time until the Lord come, who both will bring to light the hidden things of darkness, and will make manifest the counsels of the hearts; and then shall every man have praise of God." So again, during this time, it is, it is going to be to reveal what's on our hearts. And everything is just gonna be laid bare. Um, Job 12:22. "He discovers deep things out of darkness, and brings out to light a shadow of death." And again, this revealing, um, the deep things out of darkness. So in incredible darkness, and again, you know, this is gonna be frightening for a lot, a lot of people. But out of darkness is gonna become great light. Um, but deep things and deep things of the heart are gonna be revealed during this time. Daniel 2:22. "He reveals the deep and secret things; he knows what is in the darkness, and the light dwells with him." And so again, we are gonna be protected by his marvellous light, we are going to be protected. So the light means that we're not gonna be in the shadow of death. The hearts are gonna be revealed, well, we're, our prayers right now is for our hearts. Please Father God, reveal my heart now, you know, put me through the refiner's fire now. We don't want to wait until this three days of darkness. Um, like the people, it's gonna be overtaken unawares. You know, we're in preparation time now, we're having our hearts revealed, we're going through the refiner's fire now. And so we are uncovered, or we're covered by the glory of God. So the children of disobedience, they are uncovered, they don't have any covering whatsoever. Their covering is gonna be the darkness. Our covering is by the glory of God, hallelujah. And that's because we're gonna be full of the Holy Spirit, because we're gonna be these wise virgins who have our vessels full of oil. And we're gonna be in the Word, we're gonna be praying, fill me with your Holy Spirit, and we're gonna be covered with the glory of God. Okay. So just go to my notes. So there's gonna be nowhere to hide, hearts are gonna be revealed during this time. Job 34:22 then. "There is no darkness nor shadow of death where the workers of iniquity may hide themselves." Again, nowhere to hide for the wicked. Psalm 105:28. "He sent darkness and made it dark, and they rebelled not against his word." So they're not gonna be able to rebel against this. Um, they're not gonna be able to rebel against his word during this time of darkness. John 1:5. "And the light shines in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not." And again, they're not gonna understand, and they're not gonna understand the light during this time of darkness. Matthew 6:23. "But if thine eye be evil, thy whole body shall be full of darkness. If therefore the light is in thee, be darkness; how great is that darkness?" Question mark. So again, it's so important what we are viewing with our eyes. Because what we see goes into our soul, you know, our eyes are the windows to our soul, and this is what it's saying. "So if thine eye be evil, a whole body shall be full of darkness." So if you're still someone who's watching the television and watching, you know, something horrific like Walking Dead, you know, um, or anything with fornication and murder and violence, then your eye is evil, and the rest of you will be darkness, and this is what it's saying. And this is why it's so, so important to be careful of not only what you watch, you know, what you listen to with your ears, what, what, what is going into your soul. And so this will be manifest during this time of darkness, what is in you. And so, um, no man can serve two masters, absolutely. And so in the time of judgment, have you filled your soul by watching the light or watching the darkness? And what has filled your soul, it will all be made manifest. So have you been filling your soul by reading the Word with your eyes? Have you been filling your soul by listening to worship music? Have you been filling your soul and filling yourself up with the Holy Spirit by praying and being in relationship and fellowship with our God? Or have you just been a believer with your lips most of the time, but the rest of the time you're watching violence, or you're listening to secular music? That, you know, the words are just horrific, a lot of these modern tunes now. Um, just be very careful and mindful what you are putting in is what you're filling your very soul with. And so, yes, we have the righteousness of our Lord Jesus Christ, but it matters what we are filling our soul with. So are we filling it with the Holy Spirit, being filled up with the light, or are we filling it with darkness? And so this is why it's so important to be washed clean daily by reading our Word. And so this is such an important scripture. Luke 22:53 then. "When I was daily with you in the temple, you stretched forth no hands against me; but this is your hour and the power of darkness." So again, this is only because God allowed it, so let's just be very clear about that. He only allowed the power of darkness at that time, because um this was gonna be his victory over the darkness, they just didn't realise it. So in their power, or so they thought, you know, they, they went ahead and um, it was at this point they sacrificed our Yeshua Hamashiach. Um, but that is just saying, yes, the power of darkness, this is what you do. You, you sacrifice the righteous, but because you've sacrificed the righteous, the righteous has actually won. Hallelujah. Colossians 1:12 to 13 then. "Giving thanks unto the Father, which has made us to be partakers of the inheritance of the saints in light, who has delivered us from the power of darkness, and has translated us into the kingdom of his Son." So saints in light, and this is the kingdom of our King Yeshua. 1 Peter 1:5 then. "This then is the message which we have heard of him, and declare unto you, that God is light, and in him is no darkness at all." So he brings the darkness for judgment, but he is not the darkness. He is going to be the light within that darkness for us. And so as you can see already, there's many, many scriptures that confirm and point to the three days of darkness, and we can learn all about three days of darkness from scriptures. And no need for sensationalism. And being grounded in the Word as well, you know, um, it's, it's just so important. It's so important, because then it, it qualifies it in our own mind as well, that yes, this isn't just a sensationalist claim from a lot of people that are um coming on here and talking about prophecy, you know? We can confirm everything now with scripture, and there's, there's so many more scriptures. I'm just gonna turn this down in a second. So going from judgment then, we've spoken about judgment, just gonna go on um with the scriptures for the noonday prophecies, and why it is noonday that it begins. So Matthew 27:45. "Now from the sixth hour there was darkness over all the land unto the ninth hour." And so that sixth hour, um, they start their day from dawn, and so that's why the sixth hour is noon. And so this is a prophetic scripture to tell us when the darkness is going to begin. And again, in Acts um 22:6, this is the one where Saul was blinded. "And it came to pass, that as I made my journey, and was come nigh unto Damascus about noon, suddenly there shone from heaven a great light round about me." So again, this, this scripture, this was um Saul, who was on the way to Damascus, um, after he was saved and became a believer, he became Paul. and became a believer, he became Paul, but Saul was blinded in this um Damascus moment and because it was the greatest light and Ayishua Hamashiach appeared to him. And it says here that suddenly there shone from heaven a great light and it was around about noon. So there you go, another prophetic scripture to tell us it's going to be noon. I will just then read out Amos eight nine to ten. And it shall come to pass in the day, says the Lord God, that I will cause the sun to go down at noon and I will darken the earth in the clear day. And I will turn your feasts to mourning and all your songs into lamentation. And I will bring up sackcloth upon all loins and baldness upon every head. And I will make it as the morning of an only sun, the end thereof is a bitter day. So it's interesting here again, it says the sun to go down at noon. And and again, it it was interesting that it said the mourning, mourning as in um you know, grieving of his only son during this time. And there's other noonday prophecies. And I'll just um just read out the scriptures, I'll put these in the description box as well. But we've got Isaiah fifty-eight ten, we've got Isaiah fifty-nine ten, Deuteronomy twenty-eight twenty-nine and Job five fourteen. If if you want to read any of those as well, they are all a noon day prophecies. So I'm just getting a really dry throat these days. Doing too much rambling, eh? So so I'm just going to discuss now who is the darkness. So we've already mentioned the demonic and the supernatural. And just going to talk about the attributes. So just to say that this isn't from anything that I've received, but um from others um dreams that have given me revelations with regards to this demonic time. I haven't had this myself, but this is from fellow brothers and sisters in Christ with regards to the demonic. These demons, they can portray themselves as people that we know. We already know this about spirits because there's what's called familiar spirits. They're already in our generations, they're already in our families and they know us very, very well. And they can take on the form of our family members. And so during this time, they're going to be able, they're going to be capable of knocking on the door, sounding just like our family members. And and so it's just to be mindful of this, this is very real and they do have these capabilities, we know this, we know this about familiar spirits. And we've all had our run-ins, let's just say, with with the demonic, so we know what they're capable of. And they're probably capable of so much more. And during this time, I believe they're going to be given a lot more power during this three days of darkness, you know, we're we're fine, we're not to worry because we are children of light, King Yeshua has got us. Um, we abide under his wing, we're in his refuge, we're in his ark. But for the rest and for the disobedient, and I I'm praying for the lost right now, I really am praying for the lost during this time, they're basically going to come head on with the demonic and they're going to feel their full force during this time. That's what's going to be happening. So we need to be praying right now. And so uh, I'll just say a few scriptures then with regards to the demonic. And we've got Psalms ninety-one five to six. So thou shalt not be afraid for the terror by night, nor for the arrow that flies by day, nor for the pestilence that walks in darkness, nor for the destruction that wastes at noon day. And again, that's actually another noonday prophecy as well. Um, but it's also telling us that it's pestilence and that it's going to be walking about in this darkness and this is demonic. And when I actually did um a bit of a word search into pestilence, the Hebrew word means a lot more than just diseases. It does mean demonic too. And it often includes any and all forms of public mass destruction, that's what pestilence also means. And it also suggests that you have to get your house into order. So when I was um researching the Hebrew of pestilence, this is actually what it means. Means there's going to be public mass destruction and you better get your house into order. And so Psalm ninety-one. Read all of Psalm ninety-one, this is going to be our go-to um fighting our spiritual battles, absolutely. And so as we've already um spoken about, the other attributes of this darkness being demonic. You know, it's going to be, it's thick, it's gross, um already said in Exodus ten twenty-one, it's going to be felt. So it's, you know, it's going to be something that people are going to feel. Um, Psalm eighty-eight six said, describes it as a pit. And it is, it's 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 out of the pits of hell, that's what this three days of darkness is. In Genesis one two, actually describes the darkness as the deep. Um, and so this is out of the deep, isn't it? Um, I believe it's the scripture where the um, the demons are legion and they are in that man in the in the Gannarians, Gadreans, I can never pronounce, I can't pronounce names, sorry. Well, when he had all them demons, the one thing that they said to um Jesus was do not send us into the deep. And that's because in this deep is demonic beings, probably worse than these demons, you know, because they have their own hierarchy. Don't send us into the deep, so Genesis one two. Isaiah forty-two seven um describes the darkness as a prison house. Psalm one hundred and seven ten describes it as being bound in affliction during this time. Genesis fifteen twelve describes it as horror. Psalm one oh four twenty. Thou makes darkness and it is night wherein all the beasts of the forest do creep forth. Revelation sixteen ten, and the fifth angel poured out his vile upon the seat of the beast and his kingdom was full of darkness. This darkness is Satan's kingdom. And so we have a load of scriptures here pointing us and telling us what the darkness is, and so now we know. Isaiah forty-five seven. I form the light, I create darkness. I make peace and create evil. I, the Lord, do all these things. And so he's saying he's created the darkness. It's interesting that he says I form the light but created the darkness. I, the Lord, do all these things. And so this scripture is so important to understand because our God is in control. And so even out of this three days of darkness with what's going on, just know your God and he is in control. And so why then is darkness judgment? Why is it judgment? Well, John three nineteen tells us. And this is the condemnation, that light has come into the world and men love darkness rather than light because their deeds were evil. So it's because the people love darkness more than they do the light. They are going to be judged and this judgment for them is condemnation. When we are believers and we are full with the Holy Spirit and we um we are not condemned by our God because we believe on his son. So Father God, only seizes his righteousness because we've been washed clean with his blood. But for the people, um, the children of disobedience, it's condemnation for them and that's what John three nineteen is telling us. And so I'll just read out then John three sixteen to eighteen. For God so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believes in him should not perish but have everlasting life. For God sent not his son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him might be saved. He that believes on him is not condemned, but he that believes not is condemned already because he has not believed in the name of the only begotten son of God. And so there you, there you have it. Um, this darkness is judgment for the people and it is their condemnation. But there's no condemnation in our King Yeshua Hamashiach, praise the Lord. And so so now we have like a further understanding of why. But we as believers and full of the Holy Spirit and being obedient to our King because we believe in him and we follow him wherever he goes, we are going to be safe during this time. Time of preparation right now. And so first Thessalonians five four five then. But you brethren are not in darkness, that this day should overtake you as a thief. You are all the children of light and the children of the day, we are not of the night nor of the darkness. John eight twelve then said Jesus, I am the light of the world. He that follows me shall not walk in darkness, but shall have the light of life. John twelve forty-six. I am come a light into the world, that whosoever believes on me should not abide in darkness. And then my all-time favourite, first Peter two nine. But you are a chosen generation of royal priesthood, a holy nation of peculiar people that you should show forth the praises of him who has called you out of darkness into his marvelous light. And Psalm one hundred and twelve four. Unto the upright there arises light in the darkness, he is gracious and full of compassion and righteous. So we are children of light and he is promised that this day will not overtake us as a thief. And so he is our ark, he is our fortress and refuge. And so we've spoken about um the judgment, we've spoken about the why. We've spoken about the attributes of the darkness and that it is demonic and that it is felt and that is horror and it is the pits of hell and it is Satan's kingdom. We'll just then end with this. Micah seven seven to ten. Therefore I will look unto you, the Lord, I will wait for the God of my salvation. My God will hear me. Rejoice not against me, O mine enemy. When I fall, I shall arise. When I sit in darkness, the Lord shall be a light unto me. I will bear the indignation of the Lord because I have sinned against him until he plead my cause and execute judgment for me. He will bring me forth to the light and I shall behold his righteousness. Then she that is mine enemy shall see it and shame shall cover her which said unto me, where is the Lord thy God? Mine eyes shall behold her, now shall she be trodden down as the mine, as the mire of the streets. So amen to the glory of God. We are children of light, we are the priesthood of light and we are covered with the glory of our King Yeshua. And so there's nothing to fear during this time, we are to be prepared. We are to know about it and we will know about it and he will warn us prior. And so I believe that's everything. There's so many more scriptures, there really is to this. But I just hope that this session has been valuable. So we know a bit more, everything's confirmed in scriptures, all in there for us to see. Okay, so just um be in the Lord, be in prayer, be in worship, be covered with his righteousness. And I love you all. And if you've made it this far, amazing. And it's time to finish off my cup of tea, which is probably cold now. All right. Thank you guys. Love you all. Bye bye.